Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plains City Council Meeting. It is Monday, December 19th at 7:00 PM, and I call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Administrator Hadler.
I emailed a last-minute item. I would request that we add this. I had numbered it for the consent agenda, but then recognized that you pointed out you should probably abstain. So if we could add it to new business, I would very much appreciate it.
All right. 11B, we will add seasonal employees, I believe was the title of it. Or seasonal staff, sorry. Seasonal staff. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. This evening is a very special evening, and we were able to celebrate with a little reception prior to the council meeting, but we'd like to officially do this on camera this evening so it can be shared for residents and for our community in recognition of the Good Neighbor Award. The Paul Stinson American Legion Post 514 has been named Maple Plains Good Neighbor 2022 Award winner. The award is the highest honor awarded by the Maple Plains City Council and is awarded to an individual, organization, or business in Maple Plain that has exhibited a lifetime of service and dedication through volunteerism, virtue, civic engagement, and creativity to meet community needs. The Paul Stinson American Legion Post 514 is made up of a committed group of veterans who volunteer numerous hours serving veterans, the community, and the Orno School District in various ways. Annually, they plan and lead the Memorial Day Service at Lewis Cemetery. They have been doing this since 1957. They ensure that unusable American flags are properly retired. They present the colors at the Orno Homecoming Football Game, the Orno High School Community Veterans Day Program, and in parades. They go to local nursing homes and participate in Veterans Day programs and even leave them. The post may be small in numbers, but they are big in heart and busy making sure we never forget those who have and those who are currently serving our country. Their selfless actions, which I've only been able to list a few tonight or we'd be here for much longer, and commitment to our community and veterans is commendable. On behalf of the city council and the residents of Maple Plain, I would like to thank the Paul Stinson American Legion Post 514 for all they do in our community. It is my honor this evening to present them with the 2022 City of Maple Plain Good Neighbor Award. I invite the post forward. Commander Meyer, there's a mic on the podium if you or any of the legion would like to
On behalf of Post 514, I graciously accept this award. I have a number of members here. I'd like to introduce them if I can.
Of course.
Our past commander Gary McPherson, our post chaplain Glenn Frieden.
You're only submariner.
Tom Rookox was in submarines. Dean Mooney, who was in fleet on a surface ship.
Target.
Target ship, yes. Marvin Johnson back there, he was in Army. And my wife back there in the red. And Don Mooney are in the Legion Auxiliary. That's all I have here tonight. So on behalf of the post and all these members, present and past, I thank you for this award. While I have the mic, I'd like to thank the Orno Rotary. They have helped us repeatedly in a number of ways, getting into Orno High School, doing Memorial Day programs, and Fashion Day programs. But mostly, I'd like to thank the City of Maple Plain Council for presenting us this award. Thank you again.
You are welcome and all well, very deserved. Of course, Mr. McPherson.
Being around this for like 27 years, there's a lot of other people we have to thank. Not only ourselves, but our auxiliary, they're our backbone. Wonderful job, thank you ladies. The cities, both Maple Plain and Independence, from either facility or something, they're there to be there for us. Maple Plain Fire and Rescue, where we store all our equipment upstairs. Again, perfect deal, nothing to worry about. The area churches are always there. In inclement weather, we can step inside or use our chairs or whatever, they're there to help us. The Orno Rotary, what a great group. And the Stinsons, great job, thank you, man. And Orno High School Band and Music, they've been coming out to our place or since sometime in the 50s. They never miss a year unless the weather gives up from them. But again, thanks so much. It's really been quite a ride. One other thing, a little history. On December 11th, 1924, 12 veterans of World War I applied for an American Legion Charter, temporary charter. And it took a few years. Some of the names involved, McGary, Halberg, Shrewsbury, Hill, Lehman, Johnson, Setzler, Anderson, Nelson, Peterson, and Parson. We've had 40 commanders. In 1925, we elected our first commander, Claude McGary. And on May 7th, 1927, our permanent post charter was granted. Our all-time high, after World War II, I'm told is like 127 people. They were, because one of the reasons, we're boxed in by four communities all around us. That doesn't make sense for us to go any bigger than we had. And we never had had a post home. If we had one, it was just for a couple of years at the beginning. But we've used the facilities of the cities to do our thing, so again, thank you.
And thank you all, and we truly value and appreciate those partnerships and all you do for the community. So if you would all like to come forward, the council would love to have a picture and present this plaque to you.
Back one, up against the wall.
Up against the wall.
I'm very happy. Come to this. Up against the wall. Okay, so.
Which way?
A couple of you kind of move over in the back there. That'll look good.
Do you have to move this way a little bit? There you go.
I was trying to hide.
Yeah.
And then, is it Tom?
Yeah.
Can I move this way a little bit?
Little guy's in the back.
Marvin, a little bit? Is that just way? All right, good.
Ready? Three, two, one, take a three moment real quick. One of those has to be good.
I heard your wife y'all smile.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
A submariner.
I just had to make the last call of meetings because of work. Been sick.
Just a reminder to make sure your mics are in front of you. Our next item of business this evening is visitors to be heard. Is there anyone to speak tonight? Ms. Ree, can please come to the podium and state your name and address?
Okay. I don't know, can you hear me or not? Okay, good. This is very important. I guess I have a lot to say. No. I happen to know, it is important. This is your, the last meeting that Caitlin is going to be attending as a council member. And you've been on for how long?
Six years.
Six years, okay. So I was just thinking before I came up here, I wanted to say thank you, number one, from the community of Maple Plain. It's not just coming to your meetings, I know, and your workshops, is that the other thing? It's not that. It's, there's many more things that are done. Those are things that are visible. But, so I know that it's dedication, which I appreciate, and I know you've been connected with the Hennepin County Library. You are a very environmentalist, I guess, you're very cautious of that. And I can't remember, well, it doesn't matter. I just want to say thank you. But I will have to say, Caitlin, I think that maybe, the thing that sticks out in my mind is that when there were community events here in Maple Plain, you were always there, representing yourself but also the council. And so to me, that shows that you cared about the town and that you had an interest. So thank you for coming to those events, even to our museum ice cream socials. So that was good. No, it's, so thanks for your six years of service. And, you know what, another thing, this is not vanity at all, I've always loved the glasses that you've worn. I have noticed those. No, they're very, they're very eye-catching. So thanks for your years of service. And now you have some extra time to not come to all these meetings and be committed and go to your committee meetings and all that. Because I know that you do, you do do a lot, all of you do that, so. So are you raising your hand or something, John?
No, I just said you bite it.
Oh, okay. All right, okay, because this is my time. All right, so thanks, Caitlin. And, but you're going to still stay in Maple Plain, are you, that you think?
And you'll see me at the next ice cream social. Wouldn't miss it.
Oh, all right, that's good. So we'll see you there, all right. But thanks so much.
Well, thank you for saying so.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Ree. Any other visitors to be heard? Oh, Mayor Johnson.
Yeah, I just want to say Marvin Johnson, Mayor of Independence. Ditto to what Joanne had to say. Caitlin, we appreciate all the work that you've done for the City of Independence. It's been good to work with you on different commissions where you've shared and so forth. So congratulations on more time. I look forward to working with you, maybe in other capacities in the future. So thank you again from the City of Independence.
Thank you, Marvin, I appreciate that. Means a lot coming from you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other visitors to be heard this evening? Okay, thank you. All right. Next item of business this evening is our consent agenda, which includes letters A through G. And I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Could I pull a couple of workshop minutes off November 14th as well as November 28th business meeting?
November 28th business meeting and November 14th workshop?
Yes.
Okay, we will pull those two from the consent agenda.
And if that's all that is being pulled, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus those two minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Fay, for that motion. Looking for a second on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Frances. All in favor of approving the consent agenda except November 14th workshop and November 28th city council business meetings, letters A through G, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Councilmember Fay, I will turn it back to you.
Okay. November 14th, city council workshop minutes, Rainbow Park Equipment Repair, which would be 3E. The last, I haven't heard any update on this, but it requested that the tree removal company replace the equipment. Not quite sure that we asked them to replace the equipment, possibly repair the equipment? Didn't we agree that it was prohibitively expensive for them to replace the equipment? So I just want to make sure that we're not asking them to replace the swing set. The swing set is important, but I think we talked, we gave a local company that might be able to weld in some tubular.
That's a good clarification, just, so it's back in working condition, how they found it.
All right, that's all I had on that. And then November 28th business meeting, all the way at the adjournment, 14. Motion by DeLuca, seconded by DeLuca.
How does that happen? Is that not right?
Very important. Very, well. Didn't know you were that popular, Mike.
We can revisit the video and verify who that is.
That's all I had.
Okay. With those two changes, one to be made in the future, looking for a motion to approve the November 14th, 2022 workshop meeting minutes and the November 28th city council business meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Frances.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Ayes have it, five to zero. All right, next item of business this evening is accounts payable, and I will turn that over to City Administrator Hadler.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me get to that spot here. You will recall, just as a clarification, so we split up the 22 and 23 payables at this time of the year, and then again in January, just to clear, keep things kind of clear and easy for our auditor. So that was the one clarification that I wanted to make. I don't think off the top of my head there was anything striking, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have a couple of questions. Bolton and Mink, which would be page 29. I don't know if it's a typo or if that is in fact the case, because historically, meetings and things of that nature, hundred, maybe a couple hundred dollars a month, and there's over a thousand dollars worth of meeting billings. Can you just check in to make sure that that's, we didn't throw an extra decimal point in there?
Yeah, and it could be that meetings is referring to meetings other than council meetings. So I know that, you know, Dave and Matt were both at our Matt Council meeting. We had our, I think Dave met with Hennepin County about the road, so it could be that it's not just these meetings. But yeah, I can check on that.
And then Davy Tree, will that, will the tree removal and the stump grinding, is that to then be essentially washed out through the EAB grant?
For the most part. There was a matching portion to that, but I think if I'm remembering off the top of my head, it was something like our 5,000 to their 25,000 or something. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but yes.
Okay, that's, I just, just two things that struck out at me as far as dollar amounts, that's all.
Sure. Any other questions or clarifications regarding accounts payable? All right, then we have four motions we need this evening. Looking for a motion to approve the city check batch in the amount of $100,267.90.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next motion is to approve the fire partnership check batch 2022 totaling $11,340.93.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Frances. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next motion is to approve city check batch 2023 in the amount of $102,210.22. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next motion, to approve the fire partnership check batch 2023 totaling $4,003.65.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
Second.
Second by Frances. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is staff reports. Those have all been submitted for us to review. Anybody have any questions for staff regarding those that we can pass on? Key hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to accept staff reports from our city planner, West Hennepin Public Safety, our city engineer, public works, fire department, and administration and finance.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is old business, letter A, 5115 Industrial Street, the T-Mobile COP amendment, and I will turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. This item's coming back before you after being tabled at the last city council meeting where the council asked for further clarification relating to the status of T-Mobile on the existing water tower. I believe you've got that up to date. And also, I know that the council has gotten some correspondence from the city attorney relating to just federal wireless communications requirements and kind of law and regulations. So with that, this item coming back before you is a request for a conditional use permit to allow new wireless antennas to be placed on the existing tower located at 5115 Industrial Street, T-Mobile, which is the applicant, SMJ International. The owner of that tower is requesting that the city allow new wireless telecommunications facilities to be installed on that existing tower. The site itself, 515 Industrial Street, is owned industrial, it's guided industrial. The site's approximately four and a half acres in size. There are two existing wireless communications towers on that site. I refer to those as the East Tower and the West Tower, just based on where they are, but they essentially sit right next to each other. They're located on the very south end of that site up against Willow Street. On those two existing towers, there is a wide array of current antennas, and then the users or owners of those antennas, they lease the space on those towers. In this particular case, the applicant, T-Mobile, is requesting that the city allow the new, allow new antennas and new ground equipment associated with supporting those antennas to be located on the West Tower. Currently on the West Tower, there are three other existing users. This would be a fourth then set of antennas located on that tower. These would be located in between two existing users at an elevation of about approximately 175 feet to kind of the center line of this particular bank of antennas. They would be proposing to install six new antennas and then the associated radios and receivers with those antennas on the same kind of racking system. And then they would have ground equipment that would support those antennas located at the base of that tower. The city encourages typically the co-location of antennas where possible, and so in this particular case, they're proposing to co-locate on this tower, which would generally be supported. In this case, also, the city has noted, kind of on numerous occasions, that this particular location is in the industrial park, it's heavily industrialized, and the existing towers kind of fit in that area, and the associated equipment with those towers fits into that area. So when we look at kind of the base equipment, the fenced-in area, the antennas going on the tower, they will generally be consistent with what's already there. So with that, we did take this to the planning commission, we did hold a public hearing, there's no public comment, no comments prior to or after the planning commission. Planning commissioners reviewed it, they're reviewing it against the criteria for granting a conditional use of permit, noting that the conditional use permit, if granted, will not take away health, safety, welfare, or reasonable use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties. In this particular case, we've noted that there's really only one surrounding residential property that's to the south, the existing kind of screening, if you will, of the other industrial uses, and just the nature of this particular site helped to mitigate any potential impact. Planning commission found that it met the criteria for granting a conditional use permit and recommended approval with the conditions found in the report and then also the resolution. That, I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into more detail on any of the particulars of this request.
Thank you to staff for doing your diligence on this and bringing it back to us with the answers to our questions. All right, I'm looking for a motion to resolution approving a conditional use permit allowing co-location of a new wireless antenna and associated equipment to be located on the existing cellular tower, West Tower, located at 5115 Industrial Street.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill. Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. New business this evening is our 2023 budget and levy, and I will turn that over to Administrator Hadler.
Thank you, Mayor. While we are at our final step here, after months and months of work on our budget, we continue to sort of improve our tracking of expenses at the city. I'm certainly still learning, two years in, so it's always an interesting process to go through this. Our final levy reflects a 9.9% increase, and there were a number of impacts to that. We did have some additional debt this year to take care of some projects, taking advantage of the lower interest rates, seeing them kind of on the rise. We did have some investment in additional staff with our new position in administration to help with code enforcement and communications and just future resilience of the organization. And then, of course, we invested heavily in our police department staff as well, trying to retain and recruit our officers there in a very competitive market. I'm happy to answer any questions. You folks have certainly seen this quite a few times, so yeah, happy to answer any questions. Oh, I will note, we had our truth and taxation hearing on December 5th. We had, again, nobody come and see my fabulous presentation.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, there was the one lady.
There was one, but no one spoke.
No one spoke, nope, nope. So, but that's available online if anybody's interested.
All right. So with that, I am looking for a resolution approving the 2023 tax levy and adopting the 2023 general, special revenue, and debt service fund budgets.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay. Second by Cahill. Any further discussion or questions?
Just a thank you, Clarissa. You worked real hard on this one.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries five to zero. The agenda item we added is seasonal staff, and I am going to turn this over to Administrator Hadler and Acting Mayor Fay, as I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you will recall, we talked last week about the possibility of adding seasonal staff to help address the costs of snow plowing this year. We're under a new contract, so there's definitely some learning going on, some inefficiencies, which I think they're getting better at, but still, I'm very concerned about the budgetary impacts of that this year. We seem to be having, I guess I didn't check an almanac, but it seems like we're having a lot more snow than usual. And so I was able, I was actually contacted by Andrew Cuskey, who is home for the holidays, and said he would be interested in if that was okay. And Andrew has a lot of experience with farm equipment. He, I threw in the tractor today, he did great. And then Doug Short, who you folks are familiar with from our grass discussion, that's kind of his. And then Doug Short, who you folks are familiar with from our, our grass discussion, that's kind of his side gig, his, his sort of full-time position. His real job is, he works for MinDOT as a mechanic and plow driver. And so he, I reached out to him to see, A, if he'd help us kind of take a look at the truck, and then B, if he might be interested in assisting, to a limited degree, with some plowing. And he was actually very happy to sign up for such a gig, as he's been getting calls as well about some of the plowing. So I guess I'm requesting that we bring these folks on. It's going to be very part-time. Again, Andrew's home from, for the holidays. I'd put him generally on trails and assisting at the fire hall. He'd be running the Kubota with the brush on it for the most part. And then we put Doug as, as very skilled at, at plowing. He could drive the smaller truck generally. If we wanted to get the bigger truck in action, he could theoretically run that as well.
Thank you. I guess there is two motions tonight that I'm asking for. Motion number one would be to hire Doug Short as a seasonal part-time employee plowing streets for the 2022, 2023 snow season at a wage of $35 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the second motion would be to hire Andrew Cuskey as a seasonal part-time employee plowing trails for the 2022, 2023 snow season at a wage of $20 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both motions passed five to zero.
Can I just clarify?
Excuse me, four to zero.
Thank you.
With one abstain, two abstains.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Councilmember Fay. Next item of business this evening is council reports and other business, and we will start with Councilmember DeLuca.
December's always a big month. We spent time in truth and taxation this year, and a thank you to staff for excellent work on putting the numbers together. EDA meeting where we talked about where we were with the downtown development, not where we'd like it to be, but where it is, and we're going to continue to do some marketing and some other things. Police Commission met earlier in the month for our year-end meeting, talking a lot about recruiting challenges with new staff. And Marvin's already left, but a shout out to the Independence folks. It's a good collaborative effort that we do with the City of Independence. We had a finance committee meeting this, this month, Councilmember Fay and I. We discussed a lot of expenditures, and I think, you know, trying to get our arms around how we're controlling those expenditures, how we're accounting for those. And we'll be doing some transitioning. There'll be a new finance committee next year, so we talked about a few transitioning pieces. There was also a personnel meeting where we talked about wage increases that we saw earlier in the consent agenda, changes to some of our benefit structures that were implemented last year with our costs. We discussed a couple of general personnel issues with Clarissa. We also talked about transitioning, because again, there'll be a different personnel committee next year. So a busy, busy month with committees, but a very satisfying month.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLuca. Councilmember Frances.
Attending most of those same meetings in addition to planning commission. They had some really good discussions. I think there needs to be a little bit more direction, and the more I get comfortable with the commissioners, I think the easier it will be for me to offer some suggestions, kind of direct conversation. Still trying to see how things work and where I fit into the puzzle. Looking forward to the new year, starting on some new committees, the finance committee, the Chamber of Commerce, and fire relief, in addition to the Highway 12 Safety Coalition and Planning Commission. So I know come the first of the year, my schedule will be extremely more busy. So, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Frances. Councilmember Fay.
Before I get into what occupied my time in the first three weeks of this month, I just wanted to reach out and say hello to Caitlin. It's been.
Hello?
It's been wonderful working with you for six years. You always, you're well-educated, you come super prepared to every meeting, very collaborative, which I appreciate. We didn't always agree on, in the same direction on, on things, but that's, that, that's okay. And I think sometimes there might have been an opportunity where you swayed me to, to take a policy change, and I think maybe quite possibly, I might have done the same. Going to miss you and wish you exceptional luck going forward. December, like Mike said, is that time where we squeeze a lot of stuff into three short weeks. So I attended all the meetings that Mike spoke of, in addition to my role with the Rotary, as well as the Board on the Rotary. And then just wanted to shout out to you. Tomorrow, we have a review. It'll go swimmingly.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Fay. As we've heard tonight, council's been very busy this month, so I will not hit on those that we've all done together, but do appreciate everyone's work and commitment and diligence reading the packets. I was able to attend the Downlos Senior Center, and just, again, the incredible partnership and reminder that there is busing opportunity for Maple Plain residents to get to the Downlos Senior Center and other events as well. It's a great place for meals and socializing, especially on these long winter days. That can get a little lonely, so don't hesitate to reach out to them, and the partnership with the city and them is very valuable. I met with Representative Robbins, who wanted to learn about some of our priorities for Maple Plain in the coming years and hopes of advocating for those. Let's see, Regional Councilor Mayors, this past month, last week, we met with the Minneapolis Public Safety Commissioner Cedric Alexander, and very excited to hear his philosophy and what he hopes to bring to not only Minneapolis, but to the entire county, which is crucial and something that us mayors out here have really been advocating for. Once we get outside of the belt loop, so often we get forgotten in the county things, and we are committed to not let that happen. So we were thrilled to hear what he had to say, so hopefully his actions will follow his speech. With the police commission as well, that Councilmember DeLuca alluded to, I have been busy. We've been interviewing candidates. We have another interview tomorrow. We had an interview last week. And again, we are trying to retain and recruit, and we do not want to settle, and we want the best for our residents, and we will continue to have interviews even if it is Christmas week. So until the right person comes in, that will be a good fit for the team and for our community, we will persevere. So Northwest Hennepin League, we really did city updates and checked in with everyone, and then we did something we've never done before. We invited all of our police chiefs and did an appreciation for them and thanked them for their work during COVID and just all they've been enduring. So it was just an encouraging meeting, and it was just nice to hear where they're at in more of an informal setting like that. The West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce continues to meet and to grow. Hopefully you all saw the ad in the Laker Pioneer asking people to shop local and just the work that they do for the community. And then, of course, we've had View Santa since we last met, which is just a beloved tradition, and they collected a record amount of food and cash, I believe we were told. The police commission, and I don't remember those numbers, but it was a great year, so thank you to everyone who donated for that. And then I as well would like to add a little bit to what Councilmember Fay shared, and I wrote mine, so I don't forget and so I don't get emotional. So Councilmember Cahill, you've been a valuable asset to the council, residents, and businesses of Maple Plain these past six years. You have been committed to your role, and you have made personal sacrifices to serve, often putting others before yourself. You have been consistent, informed, and always done your diligence before making an educated decision. Your passion for the environment, public safety, and policy is inspiring to me and often caused me to look at things from a different perspective. Even though we didn't always agree, I valued the respectful and insightful dialogue we always had. You took time to reach out to residents and listen to them directly. Your perspective has been invaluable and has challenged me many times to be a better leader. I'm grateful for your commitment and service to our community and beyond. I will miss your leadership immensely on the council and various commissions. On behalf of the council, the residents, I applaud you for your years of service and leadership. Maple Plain is truly a better place because of you, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And you have the floor.
Well, I should have written mine down, because suddenly I'm at a loss for words.
That never happens.
I'll give my official report in that I had my last watershed meeting last week, and just to note, we have, we are so lucky to have such a great group of commissioners that ask good questions and staff that just do really good work on that group. So, so happy that our Councilmember Lex gets to join that great group and get to know our watershed. I'm definitely grateful for these past six years and the opportunity to serve, and not just to serve our community, but to have served with all of you. As you've said, we didn't always agree, and that's the beautiful thing, I think, of this group, is we all bring really good perspectives and really different perspectives. And we weren't afraid to share those because there was that mutual respect. And so even when we did disagree, I knew it was because we always felt we were, had the right ideas for our community. And we did often come to different perspectives afterwards, so, and when we didn't, we still had a lot of respect. And so I just, it's been a pleasure to serve with this council and all the people in the community who stepped up as well, whether on our commissions or volunteer groups like the Legion and the museum group. It's just, we have a great little town here. So I know I had more. I will just say, you know, yeah, just thank you. I think, I don't know that I can adequately sum up these past six years, but thank you to all who have stepped up to serve and to the staff as well for all you do to support us, and maybe you'll see me in the back with Judy and maybe a poll comment or two. You know I like to do that. It's how I started, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I move to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Second.
DeLuca.